Monday, April 5th, 2021 to order in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order. This is meeting is being conducted via Zoom technology. Item one, Pledge of Allegiance. Charlie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. Item two, public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board in public forum? All right, hearing none. Item three, and that's to approve meeting minutes, March 15, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And there is a second. Any comments, questions, changes, et cetera?
No.
Hearing none. Call, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
I'm an aye, but I don't know what the protocol is because I left the meeting at 9:15, so I was only there for part of it, so.
I think an abstention would be in order.
Okay, abstain.
Selectman Hoy is an aye. That motion carries. Item four, Environmental Planner Kevin McGee. Four dot one would be to discuss and take possible action toward RFQ, RFP number three dash 2021 Lake Quanapock Management Plan. Kevin, the floor is yours. Want to give us a little background? I think you've come to us on this before, but.
Yep, we came to the group probably back in, I guess, probably beginning of January and discussed the need for this with the board there. Following your approval there to allow for the RFP, RFQ go out, we submitted out to various firms, which came back to us. We received four bids on the RFQ or RFP proposal. The lands, the Conservation Commission Lake Quanapock Subcommittee reviewed these proposals and then interviewed three of the firms which had the qualifications and the experience they were looking for. From those, the commission then, from the, actually the interviewers, the commission selected ESS Group out of Rhode Island to conduct the plan for $14,800. They meet all the requirements of the RFQ that they were looking for. So the group was happy with them. I just came in as our Q first to review the qualifications, then they looked at the pricing and actually the group has actually fell as the lowest price on top of having the qualifications that they were looking for.
Excellent. Any questions of Kevin? Kevin, notes a timeline on this. I know it was probably in the RFP, RFQ, but.
We're looking for them to complete it by, I believe it's September. So once it's signed, they'll start up on it, have the fall, the spring and summer season to do their research and their report preparation and public meetings.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I can't see. I think there's a document on page two that shows the comparison of all the applicants. And I can't see it. I don't know if I'm opening it wrong or if it chopped off in my version, but if that is what was on page two, Kevin, maybe you could just run through the numbers from the different applicants for us.
Yeah, so the different numbers we had here was like the ESS Group came in at $14,800. The second one was Northeast Aquatics at $26,600. They also put in the proposal from an additional plant sampling or review, which we really didn't request. And the next one was tie-in bond. They came in for $38,500. They're a comprehensive environmental firm, as is GZA, which was the last one, which came in $82,000.
Gosh.
That is a huge spread.
It is a pretty good spread there. They said the group was confident that the ESS would meet the requirements of what we're looking for, for the for the price they gave us. I think some of them are looking to do additional work, which we weren't requesting within the R.
Okay, there you go. That may, that may explain some of it.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And can you remind us about where the funding is coming from?
Yeah, the fund is coming from, there was a year that we didn't do any treatments, so there's funding that was carried over. So it's carried over funding that we, we have.
Got it. General Fund Budget. Okay, thank you.
Anything further of Kevin? All right, is there a motion to approve the bid from ESS Group to create the Lake Quanapock Management Plan for a fee of $14,800?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Sandy, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. Kevin, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item five, Human Rights Commission. We have Joe Kehoe, current Chair of the Commission, and there were three items which we brought up briefly at our last meeting, but hopefully you've had a chance to digest them since that time. Joe, you want to take them in following order, the first of which is the Community of Compassion proposal?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me some time to speak this morning. As I'm sure some of you will remember, in 2017, the Guilford Foundation hosted an event called Creating a Community of Compassion, and that looked at ways that we could identify issues of systemic racism in Guilford and deal with them compassionately. This was an event that was curated for town leadership, and it was never meant to be a one-off event. The vision of the Guilford Foundation at that time was that this would be something that would happen annually moving forward, but they just don't have the time, given everything else that they're doing, to host this event every year. So I spoke with Liza Petra a few months ago about the possibility of the Human Rights Commission taking over and starting to host annual events in partnership with them. And they're very behind, very much behind that idea. So in thinking about what might make sense for this year, I've been thinking a lot about trauma and the ways in which COVID has impacted our community and communities all over the country. Some of you may remember that the Guilford Human Rights Commission went through some pretty serious growing pains over this past year, and we wound up doing some educational programming within the commission. And one of those educational programs was on trauma-informed leadership and how to run a trauma-informed organization. So what we're proposing is that in either October or November of this year, should the current trajectory of COVID allow it, to host another training for town leadership called Strengthening a Community of Compassion that looks at the ways in which our town leaders can provide trauma-informed government and trauma-informed services to the public. There will also be a racial component to this, since people of color and beyond that, the LGBTQ plus community do tend to be disproportionately affected by trauma, as with so many other things. But we're really looking at the idea of how we can ensure that coming out of COVID with so many people, regardless of ethnicity or gender or sexual orientation, have been impacted over this past year, and how to make sure that we can provide services that are truly compassionate to members of Guilford, citizens of Guilford.
Joe, thank you. Thank you for that summary. And I see that the target audience is not-for-profit leaders, business owners, local government officials, representatives from the school system, youth and community faith-based leaders. Looks like you've cast a pretty wide net. And as I recall, it's, it is very similar to the event that took place back in 2017, that I was fortunate enough to have an opportunity to participate in. So I, 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 I would look forward to participating in an event like this where the Human Rights Commission be able to bring it to fruition, so. Other comments or questions?
When you participated last time, was it an in-person one? I, I didn't.
Yes, it was at the Community Center, Charlie. And it was, there was a facilitator. I always butcher her last name. It's Margie. Yes, I always butcher that, from the JDL, who actually has conducted the session, or was the group leader for the session, with some other moderators as well, so.
And this one here is playing similar to that.
Yeah. I, I'm curious. I know that we're probably going to be in the throes of COVID recovery and COVID programming for some time. And as you may or may not be aware, Joe, there's a significant amount of money from the American Rescue Plan coming our way, designed to help the community with the long, recovery from long-term effects on COVID-19. We haven't seen the details in terms of what's eligible for spending, but I would continue to proceed with working with the Guilford Foundation. But if there's something we can do to supplement that, that falls within the allowable use of COVID relief funds, we would, we would certainly consider that. At least I would, at least I would.
You know, I want to make it clear that this timeline is very much dependent on recovery. I think for an event this size, doing something on Zoom is not going to be effective. I would need to double-check with Aline Rousseau, who would probably be the primary trainer on this. But I think that an event like this would be much more powerful and effective if it happened in person.
I would agree.
Doing that is not possible. Obviously, we're not looking to push any boundaries on, you know, on COVID or making sure we're doing best practices to keep people safe. So we would be looking to then postpone and push into 2022.
If the size of the event starts growing, which I think it could very easily, you know, coming out of COVID, perhaps you might consider two smaller events, because I could certainly see how the Board of Ed issues, especially going into a new school year, just, you know, a few months into a school year. I could see spending three hours on the issues that they're going to be dealing with. And I do think the issues throughout the community are important, too. So maybe that might be a way to lessen the impact. Just, I don't think a Zoom meeting would be effective. I don't think a meeting of a hundred people would be as effective either. So you might want to think of a number of smaller events, but I don't know. Do we have a motion on the floor? Where do we stand with this, Matt?
Well, we don't. And I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that we, someone make the motion that we support the Human Rights Commission's proposal for, for the event that they've, they've identified as strengthening a community of compassion and support that initiative. So is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that and move forward.
I'll second it.
Excellent. Any further comments or questions on this one?
No, look forward to it. I'm happy, I'm happy to be a part of it, and I'm glad to see it's scheduled before the election, because you never know, so. But thank you.
Laughing on that issue.
Well.
Still attend either way.
Of course.
We won't revoke your invitation.
All right, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haberda.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. Item two, receive a recommendation regarding revision to town charter. Joe, I know that you have gone back and forth with our Town Council on this. And as you state in your memo, the the charter is very explicit about the use of chair, chairpersons, chairpeople as opposed to co-chairs. And as you note, and Council Barrett, who was actually on the call here, noted that that would require a change of charter. So we appreciate your request for the change of charter. I, I, I'm not sure that at this point we would open up a charter revision just for this, but certainly, certainly if we start to see a need and some emerging issues relative to the charter, clearly this could be an item that would be considered and contemplated by that commission.
Yes, and I want to be really clear that we're not asking for a special meeting. I know the charter is not a small issue, so this would absolutely be something that would be tagged on whenever, you know, a charter revision is next being considered by the Board of Selectmen for another issue.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Thank you for that. Thank you for that understanding.
Matt, what I, I didn't get in, I'd been on a couple of charter revision commissions in the past. I gotta tell you, this issue is a new one. Is Peter just concerned because it is set up, it says Chairman, Vice Chairman? It doesn't specifically say you can't have co-chairs, does it?
Pete? Yeah, as usual, trying to unmute myself. Yeah, well, I think it's very specific. It says a chairperson. And, you know, there's no ambiguity around that. I did take a look at all other boards and commissions. There are no other co-chairs.
No, I wasn't so much, excuse me, I didn't mean to question, you know, the, what it says and the legal opinion of it. I just wanted to get the spirit of the document. Like I said, I've been on a couple, and I don't remember this coming up, and I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't somewhere in the charter that spell, you know, really expanded on it, that it specifically didn't want it, or is it just an issue that it hasn't come up before?
Yeah, I think that's right. And Charlie, I think I served on a couple with you as well. So it has not come up in past charter revision commissions that I'm aware of. And, you know, it's certainly a legitimate topic for conversation. But, you know, as far as the, you know, it's very specific as to appointment of a chairperson, so.
I, I don't think it's logical to open up a charter revision commission for this particular item. Usually what's been done in the past, Matt, is we just run a list for a while until enough issues build up, then it, and it's worth opening up a charter revision commission. Can the, can the Human Rights Commission operate within this, you know, operate without this change at this point? I mean, is it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. As soon as Mr. Barrett made it clear to us that operating with co-chairs would not be appropriate or legal, we ceased doing so. We had just voted to create a co-chair position. And as soon as, as I said, as Mr. Barrett made it clear to us that that would not be legally appropriate, we went back to the Chair, Vice Chair format, and we'll continue doing that until such time.
Operationally, that works for you and everything?
It's not, honestly, it's not ideal. It's not what we feel would work best for us as a commission. But that being said, we are more concerned with, you know, staying within the bounds of what's legal and what's appropriate than doing what's right for us.
Is it a matter of the authority between the Chair and the Vice Chair? I mean, couldn't you just simply amend your, your guidelines, your bylaws, or whatever you're being guided by to allow the Vice Chair just about equal powers to a Chair type thing? Or that, yeah, that way the, the two positions would have the ability to do whatever it is needs doing without having co-chair titles?
And I guess I would toss that question back over to you, Mr. Barrett. Is that legally feasible?
Yeah, you know, frankly, except for the labeling of who's a Chair and who's a Vice Chair, you know, in some respects, it's strictly cosmetic. A Chairman can, for instance, just open up the meeting to general discussion and conversation, and maybe that's what you're, you folks are, you know, given, given your charge. Maybe that's what's appropriate for you, for your commission members to do. So there's no prohibition to doing that. It's, it's, you know, maybe the Chair opens the meeting and, and just frames the ensuing discussion that way.
Yeah, just sign, you know, setting agendas and, and that type of thing, you know. I, I don't know, each commission, I guess, has its own guidelines, bylaws, or whatever they call them. But it seems to me if you simply gave the co-chair equal its necessary powers, that would kind of.
The Vice Chair?
Right.
Yeah, we could certainly do that for the time being. You know, I would like for this to be put on the list for the next time a charter revision is considered. As I said, we're absolutely not asking that a charter revision be undertaken to address this sole issue. But if it could be added to the list to be looked at the next time the Charter Revision Commission meets, that would be great. And in the meantime, Mr. Barrett, I'll look over our Manual of Governance. Again, I know you've been working on that for some time now. So I'll just check to, to see how we, how we have that structured with the Chair and Vice Chair for the time being, so we can get that finished.
I, I've had, I've had some thoughts about that that I've shared with Matt, and so we can, we can talk further about that, for sure.
Thank you.
All right. Five dot three is discuss and take possible action on the Guilford Shoreline Cultural Festival. Joe, want to just give us a quick summary of the, of that, for those in the viewing audience?
Sure. So I want to first be very clear that this was the brainchild of our commission member Stephanie Brown, who has, was born and raised in Guilford and has very, very fond memories of a festival that apparently used to take place on the Green when she was a child. So this vision came out of her childhood experiences here. So, you know, as you can see from her proposal, this is essentially going to be a festival that will give Guilford an opportunity to really celebrate all of the cultures that go into making Guilford the wonderful place that it is. One thing that I really like about this idea is that we tend to think of whiteness as a culture, and it's not. This will give Italians, the Irish, Germans, Scandinavians, as well as, you know, our Hispanic and Latinx neighbors, our Black neighbors, our AAPI neighbors, an opportunity to really celebrate all of the diverse cultures that made Guilford such a wonderful place to live. So this is tentatively being proposed for July of August of 2022. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of planning that needs to go into something this size and coordination. We'll be looking to create a subcommittee that's both members of the Human Rights Commission and members of the public, because we're going to need extra help trying to put something this size together. And really, you know, this is just a bare bones proposal about some of our ideas. We didn't want to move forward with planning until, you know, we had authority to at least begin planning. So this would not be the last proposal that you would all see on this, on this issue, or on this idea.
Joe, thank, thank you for that summary, and this really is intriguing. I'm thinking that you may want to rely, as you move forward with this, on the experiences of the recently formed Performing Arts Festival Group, who basically went from zero to 60 miles an hour over the course of a couple of years. And they're, as you're probably aware, they, they do alternating years for the Performing Arts Festival. Some modified version of it is slated to happen this year. And I've talked to the Vice Chair there with the challenges of COVID. At least the hope here is in 2022, we've got that well behind us. And, and these kind of gathering sizes, yeah, will, will be, will be fine. So I, I would suggest chatting with those folks to see, not necessarily, you know, what worked, but where, where they have problems as they were trying to formulate this and, and move it forward. So, and obviously, there are several venues here, including, you know, the town facilities, the Green, the Community Center, the high school. I, I would certainly think that the schools would be willing to participate in much the same fashion that they do with the Performing Arts Festival. The good news is your July and August dates don't necessarily run afoul of a lot of activities that would occur at the schools. But I would caution that there are camps and those kind of things during the summertime that you'd need to lock this in way ahead of time, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure we need a motion to, to support this, but Joe, it's something I think, I see the heads nodding around the Zoom room here. That's, it sounds like something folks would, would, would support, so.
I, I think that's a good idea. I mean, I can appreciate that it's going to take a while to put together, but I think it'd be worth the effort, that's for sure.
No, no need for a motion, but supportive of the idea.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Joe, thank, thank you for your time and also all the work you're doing.
Yep.
Have a good day.
You too. All right, item six, review and discuss with possible action the adoption of a Guilford tax incentive program. Folks, I think we've, we started this off back in December timeframe after a presentation from the folks at the Economic Development Commission who given us a straw man proposal. This is, this is the byproduct of work that Pete and I have done with some input from board members. Al Charlie had forwarded along some suggestions. And this is a document we have with some additional supporting materials, including some notes relative to legislative history, which is, which has informed how the format was compiled, and then some of the considerations that Pete, Pete had, and I had been talking about. So I don't know if everyone has had an opportunity to take a look at it. Or I know, you know, with the holiday schedule, you might not have had a chance to preview this prior to the meeting. It has been shared with the Economic Development Commission for their consideration. They meet tomorrow. Not that we necessarily need their approval, but it certainly would, would be helpful if we did have their concurrence that this is what, what we should at least come out, come out of the gateway. We could always revise it if need be. And I think in here, we've given ourselves some flexibility to modify the awards. As you see, the tax abatement schedule, which really has three categories. And, you know, Pete, you could comment as to whether or not we have to strict, have to stay strictly within those guidelines. There are some state statutory provisions that allow you to do pretty much anything you want, if I'm not mistaken, Pete.
Go again. Yeah, well, what, there was that, a schedule, and I kind of mentioned this to Matt. I think that what was circulating with the Economic Development Commission when they were working on this was one of the older versions of the statute that I think it's best to act under. And that one had a schedule with, you know, certain levels of assessment or increases in assessment and, and how long a period of time the deferral could be for. But a recent, relatively recent. But a recent relatively recent change to the statute invest discretion as to what levels of assessment would would qualify for the program and discretion as to the amount of time that assessments could be deferred and phased in. So it's a more workable statute. So one of the things that I wanted, and I'll attend that Economic Development Commission meeting with Matt. I one of the questions I'll have is, did the commission think that the schedule they were basically proposing was required under the statute? Or did they, you know, think, okay, having looked at the discretion that is possible, this is what we think? So that's one of the questions. But there is, I think, and I have to take a look, I think there's a cap of ten years that an assessment can be deferred out or phased in. But other than that, there's quite a bit of discretion with the Board of Selectmen on a case by case basis. So I'll just, if you don't mind me, to talk a little bit further about this. The right now, the Board of Selectmen under this particular statute has the discretion to do an agreement one at a time. So I was talking to a colleague who this had come up. They were trying to renovate and re-energize a theater, I think in Stratford. And it, you know, there was a discussion about how to how to improve the place and phase in the an assessment, and they worked out an agreement and brought that to the Board of Selectmen. There was no advanced policy. There were no not any statutory schedule that was followed. And so you have that authority now. The the purpose of adopting a policy really is to give advance notice that the town is is the Board of Selectmen in particular is open for this, open for this kind of discussion. And to also give some ideas about the type of, rather than everyone who comes in will get a hearing and some energy invested in it by department heads, that it would give some advance notice of the type of programs, excuse me, improvements, businesses, et cetera, that you're looking to encourage. So that's the thought behind the policy. And obviously, it's very a very flexible one.
Any other questions, Pete?
Pete, can you explain on the table tax abatement schedule? Maximum period of abatement may not be granted for all applications.
Now, that that was, I put that in there to show that this is not mandatory, it's still discretionary. So you could, if you had a, and we were talking about who would have this conversation.
That's that's a discretionary thing. It's not saying that we can't, in other words, if it turned out for some reason we had multiple applications and we gave them all the maximum, that's not what that's saying, that we can't do that.
No, it's it's, yeah, right, it's it's per proposal that just because you've proposed one thing and maybe worked it out with the town planner as to what, you know, you as a developer would be interested, yeah.
So if we had multiple proposals and we gave them all the maximum, that would be all right.
Yep.
Okay. I agree too much into it. All right.
So one of one of my concerns was that I wouldn't want there to be a situation where an existing business, an existing taxpayer was put into some kind of competitive disadvantaged situation because of someone new coming in from outside and getting this. But we have discretion to look at each situation. So something, and I can't even think of an example of where that might apply. But it sounds like we do have discretion to look at each each individual situation on its merits and consider things like that.
You know, that would come into play. I mean, for instance, you know, when there was a major retailer proposed for I'm not going to say the Rock pile, but I guess. You know, they claimed that it was highly competitive for a number of other merchants. But that's where our discretion comes into play.
Good, that's perfect.
You have to weigh the realities of that.
And North Branford, I'm sorry.
No.
Well, there was, I don't know if they circulated to you, it was part of their deliberations to look at the North Branford Plan, which was brought under a different statute, a rehabilitation plan, which is more, it's a mandatory. In other words, if that one, if somebody applies for it, obviously, the legislative body can still say no. But there's actually an appeal process to Superior Court for that one. So that if they determine that, hey, it fit the criteria, but Superior Court judge determines it fits the criteria and you denied it anyway, they they may order it to be granted. That's not this statute that we're at.
Okay, good, good, that's good. And I was also wondering if you could address any differences between this version and the prior version with respect to residential projects?
Well, let me take a peek at the statute. There was Yeah, so this is one of the reasons, I'm going to speculate here. This is one of the reasons, I think, North Branford used that rehabilitation statute. They've had it for quite a while. The the current version of the statute we're acting under used to be more limited as to what it would apply to. And if you look at the statute now, there's, there's, you know, a list of, I think, eleven or twelve different and broadly defined types of activities or improvements that it would apply to. And residential used to be, I gave I actually gave you some older versions of the statute. It used to be limited to transient residential use. And now it's been brought into residential as long as it's consisting of four or more dwelling units.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So so just one of the type of business or project particularly targeted by this program, as you can see, item four was to increase the stock of sustainable and affordable housing.
Excellent.
Which was an issue I think we we had all talked about as being desirous to to help to help attract potential developers for those kind of projects. I'm not sure this was contemplated for something like a sixty-six High Street, which is individual ownership of very high end units. But certainly, any developer can come to us based on the statute Pete is talking about to 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 request consideration for some kind of tax abatement program. This just gives, this, I think, gives us the guidelines around which we would like to engage. Not that we are completely limited to this, but this gives us a framework. And as Pete said, and I think, you know, Charlie said at a previous meeting, you know, let everybody know the doors are open to Guilford. If if the right projects come through, that this board wants to support through tax abatements, we now have some working guidelines.
Okay, good, thank you.
I guess I have my first instinct, it sounds like a good idea that we're going to encourage development and maybe multifamily housing. And there's an opportunity here that that's gone missing. But I mean, this is a an institutional knowledge question, I suppose. But do we have any sense that that over the past ten or fifteen years, we've missed out on opportunities because people haven't had a tax up a tax break opportunity?
I'm going to simply speak to that and it's simply.
I suspected you might have the longevity on this one, Charlie.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's strictly anecdotal. But there there was a time when, you know, Guilford did have a reputation that it was closed to development. You know, into Matt's point, and the point I've tried to make is this is a comparatively this is obviously a work in progress and a first step. But at least it says, it gives us some general parameters that sends a message that, you know, we're open to discussion. I mean, that's what it comes down to. We're not, we're not spelling it out that, yes, if you do this, you're going to get this abatement. But we are saying that, you know, what you got in, you know, in your plans or possibilities. And, you know, for me to specifically state any cases where we lost an opportunity. I I know when before Yale decided to build on Goose Lane that there were a number of proposals for that that parcel of property that went elsewhere. And the assumption was made simply that they went elsewhere because of the ability to to get the project done. And, you know, we struggled long and hard to get the Yale situation, and that just was an opportunity. So, you know, I could give you a lot of anecdotal, you know, gut feelings over the last twenty years of people that, you know, just rolled their eyes and said, no, I'm not even going to try and go for it. But there would just be me telling stories, right?
Okay, and thank you, Charlie, and I appreciate that perspective. Both ends of the words. But but I guess the second question related to that is, and maybe this is for the economic development folks, or what do we do then to let people know that this has happened? I mean, is it some sort of, is a part of, like, how, like, oh, well, I'm good to have this thing in our hip pocket, but if people don't know it, what's it doing?
I think, I, yeah, I think I think we need to publicize it. And there's a there's a classic PR rollout campaign that we'd need to do. Engage the the local media, perhaps get an article written about it.
Well, that's the role, that's the role of the Economic Development Coordinator, too. I mean, discussions or inquiries or in in the you know, that you you hit it on the head, Matt. It's marketing, it's spelling it out for for opportunities that arise and in conversations and networking. I mean, that's how you get it done.
I agree, I agree. And I think if we vote on this affirmatively today, then the EDC has something that has some teeth to it, and they'll they'll go with it. And they've been asking or initiating this concept for like a year. So I I think it's personally a really good thing, and I like the way it's written. I mean, it kind of gives all kinds of ways to go on it, but some at least something exists. So I really support it.
I could just pipe in here, you know, obviously, this would go on the website, the town website, too. That's where you find most of these things. And I will answer to your question, Lou, also. This is, you know, developers, this is on their shortlist of the things they look at. It's not always determinative one way or the other, but, you know, they'll look at the demographics, the market conditions, the existence of competitors. And they'll also look at the availability of potential tax deferral strategies. And then the only thing, I'll throw this out to you, Matt. Do you want to act on this before we loop Economic Development Commission back in? That's my only question.
I think, given the given the reaction of my fellow board members, it sounds like we're supportive of this. So we could go ahead and adopt this as a policy, subject to future change on input from the Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, I think rather than adopting it, just to your point, Matt, maybe a resolution or something just explaining our support for it to the EDC and for them to finalize it.
Okay. All right, let's see if that Charlie, we're going to try to put that into a form of a motion that we're going to support moving this forward in the form of a motion to move this forward to the Economic Development Commission as the Board of Selectmen's preferred policy. And but we would certainly welcome input from the Economic Development Commission. That?
Yep, so move.
Second?
Second, that understanding. So then the next step would be, we would hear back from EDC with their final proposal and and their thoughts on it. And then that would be the what gets enacted.
And I, yeah, I think we would get their reaction to it and any suggested changes. And at that point, if we felt that they warranted us revising this policy, we would then revise it at that point.
Okay, so we're passing this.
It's not a rule, it's a policy, so.
Right. The motion is to adopt the policy and send it to to the Economic Development Commission for further input.
Got it, okay, good. Happy to second.
There, perfect. Any further discussions or comments? Let me try, here, let me try your mind, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber. Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also in line, that motion carries, thank you very much. And Pete, thank you for all your work on getting that thing ready. And I think I think back in December, I had I had hoped to get this out in the first quarter. We're a couple of days late, but thank you very much, everyone, for moving moving it at at much faster than some of the glacial pace that some of the other things we do take. But thank you very much. Item seven, consider and take possible action to set a public hearing date for Monday, May third, 2021, at eight thirty AM, which is a regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting to receive public comment on the following, and that's the ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Guilford, Chapter Nine Boards, Commissions and Committees, and an ordinance to amend Chapter eighty-eight pensions. Pete, you want to give us just the overview on this, please? Peter and or Mitch?
I'll let Pete go on this one. Yeah, who's, are you sure, Mitch? All right, I I'll both MJ and Mitch could probably comment more at length on the actual OPEB strategy, how that's going to work. But this is, and I know you folks have talked about this in the past, this is how to implement it. There's a, you know, it would require adoption of this agreement, a way of doing business for our post-employment benefits. So this enables the establishment of a trust and how it's going to work. And while we were at it, you know, we took a look at the language relating to the pension committee because the comment pension committee under this is going to be the OPEB Board. And we have, as a second part or a second ordinance amendment to adopt, it would be to clarify what the role of the pension committee is. It used to, it started off as just being in the one referred to in just the one town employee pension document. But it's actually the pension committee, obviously, is the pension committee for all three of our town pension plans. So we wanted to clarify that and then to add in this component of being the OPEB Board. As to the details of the trust and everything else, I'll defer to Mary Jane and perhaps Mitch.
Yes, Mary Jane.
I guess my only question is whether or not the trust document itself is actually acted upon at that meeting. I don't want to miss any, I don't want, I don't want to miss any steps. So the trust document itself, at what, how is that? I would have expected to see that as a as a item in this section seven.
Yeah, we did not get that from, just so, you know, we have outside counsel on this, shipment in Goodwin. So I don't know, we'd have to ask Rich. Yeah, I think we'll, I want to leave it there, I have my thoughts.
I believe that's part of the process, the ordinance and the trust document both have to be adopted. So the trust document is is ready to go because you responded to my email last last week that we approved all the changes. So that document is is also ready. I just want to make sure that we're not missing any checkboxes in this.
I think I'm going to stick my neck out, I never should. But I think adoption of the ordinance will serve as adoption of the trust agreement that's referenced in it, which is good to go. I think it'll authorize the signatures for that. But let's let's check with Rich on that.
Either way, it seems, you know, whether you have to do two approvals, you know, the ordinance and then the establishment of the trust. I mean, can't we vote on doing both if necessary?
Yeah, and your job is to, yeah, right, your job is to do the do the ordinances. So this is the statutory part or the local law part of it. And as far Um, and as far as whether the Board of Selectmen needs to also independently authorize the execution of the trust agreement. Yeah, let's, let's check with Rich about that, but that won't require an ordinance process.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd be willing to move that we approve the ordinance and the establishment of the trust separately if necessary.
So all we're doing is setting the meeting date.
Setting the meeting date.
Yeah.
And, and the outside counsel will be pres, Richard Cohen will be present for that meeting as well to answer questions that come up from the public or from the board.
Right, and, and I think Mary Jane, the essence of Mary Jane's question was, should we reference the OPEB, uh, the trust document in our call of the meeting? If we have, if, if that actually becomes part of the requirement at that meeting, although it's not a vote, this is just a public hearing. So, uh, if, if it needs to be, if it needs to be aired as part of that hearing, uh, then this language shouldn't incorporate that. Um, but what, what, what I think you're saying, Pete, is that you don't, you don't think it needs to be there because it's incorporated into pension document itself.
Yeah.
In the ordinance.
The ordinance, that's right, the ordinance will enable the trust agreement, which we already have planned, yeah, uh, prepared and ready to go. So that's not going to require the same process as adopting the ordinances.
Okay.
All right. Makes sense.
All right, so I, so I think it's okay as is, uh, if we need to change it, we've got some time. Uh, Trace, when do you have to put this in, uh, a, a, a paper of local circulation?
I don't have to submit it until Wednesday.
Fine.
Yeah, I'll just note that I, I have original correspondence from Attorney Cohen back from September 2018, and, and it says, "The Board of Select, um, draft town ordinances and the Board of Selectmen resolutions for adopting the ordinance and related OPEB documents."
Okay.
So.
Good, so I think that, yeah, so i- i- once we go through the public hearing and they're per, prepared to act on this, the resolution would in, include, um, that, the, the trust agreement. So let's, you know, let's kind of keep our radar up on that, make sure that's part of Rich's, uh, presentation, that we have that resolution ready at the, uh, at the meeting that there'll be a vote on.
Good.
Good.
Okay, uh, so, uh, that being said, is there a motion to set a, uh, public hearing day from, uh, Monday, May 3rd, 2021, at 8:30 AM to receive public comment on, on, uh, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, Chapter 9, Boards, Commissions and Committees, and an ordinance to amend Chapter 88 pensions?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, let me try your minds, uh, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Thank you very much, Pete, thanks for your work on that, uh, and Mitch and Mary Jane as well. Mary Jane, you're getting closer. Want to talk about glacial pace, right?
That's usually my turn.
That memo, that, that memo you just quoted was, that, that memo you quote, just quoted was from 2018, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Uh, yeah, not to compare ourselves to, uh, other towns in the state, but I have a sneaky feeling we're on the right side of the curve here.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
I would agree, thank you very much.
For all the hard work in the background.
Okay. Item eight, consider to take possible action on an application, uh, for privately donated monuments on the green. Jerry Silbert, uh, our Chair of the Green Committee and, uh, Protector of the Green, uh, good morning. And want to give us a little background on this, please?
Good morning, everyone. Sure. Recently, recently I received a email from Karen Kursia from a Captain Cudicello, who's serving now in the Horn of Africa on, uh, a mission called, uh, or an operation called Enduring Freedom. And he wanted or was requesting to place a monument on the green with respect to the global war on terror. So, uh, I wrote back to Captain, uh, Cudicello and I said the following. "Thank you for your email about placing a global war on terror monument on the Guilford Green. The Board of Selectmen in Guilford have a policy about monuments on the green that I am attaching to this email. Also attached is the application form for privately donated monuments. The application needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen before becoming official. This will take about a week if there are no revisions to the application form. You will receive an email from me shortly after the application form has been approved. Thank you for your service to our country. Take care and be well. Jerry Silbert, Chairman of the Guilford Green Committee." So what needs to be done is for you to look at the, uh, application form, which, uh, I included in an email to, uh, Tracy. And, uh, it's exactly the same as the criteria stated in the policy for monuments and plaques and so forth. So what we need is for you to formally approve of the application form, so I can send it to Captain Cudicello. And in turn, he would fill out that form if he decides to do so and send it to the Guilford Green Committee for the Green Committee to discuss, uh, whether they will, uh, recommend that to the Board of Selectmen. So that's where we are now.
Excellent, Jerry, thank you for that, uh, detailed explanation and clearly, uh, this is putting form to, uh, to, to a process that currently doesn't have that kind of form. So this becomes an adopted policy for any applicant, uh, for privately donated monuments, markers, plaques, benches and memorials on the town green, and provides consistency in terms of the, uh, uh, the, the way individual requests are dealt with. Is it, uh, is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Sandy?
I have a couple of questions, some of us, you might have some, I mean, you all might have these questions. Um, so this application has never been approved before by a Board of Selectmen?
Correct. The policy has been approved, but not the application form itself.
Okay. Uh, number two, are, are there private, um, privately donated monuments on the green now?
In, in the sense that there are war memorials on the green, I'm not quite sure. Uh, I think some of them were privately donated, but I, I'm not quite sure if that, uh, if all of them were.
Okay, cause I remember the one for, um, Vietnam, I think, was put, um, in the northwest corner within the last 20 years or so, I do remember that one, but, um, I have nothing against what, um, I'm, I'm sorry, major, corporal, um, sergeant.
Captain.
Captain. Cudicello, his, his worthy efforts, but will we ever run out of space if, um, I don't know, how many private monuments can the green support? I guess that's what I, with, with the way the green is used in other ways.
Right, well, this, this is the beginning of the application process. So, you know, the decision about how, what it's going to be and how it gets going to be and all those kinds of things, I think has to occur first, and the Green Committee has a chance to comment, examine and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. So that's kind of how the process runs now. I don't think we're prepared to make any decisions purely based on, except on, on what the application form says.
You know, to, to Sandy's point, you know, my reaction, initial reaction is, is this isn't restrictive enough. Uh, this seems to address most of the mechanical issues of the actual construction of a monument, but it doesn't address the discretionary decision of what monuments or how many monuments, uh, are going to be on there. Now, does this by being as, well, not as loose as it is, but does that allow us to have, not us, but necessarily the Green Committee, uh, enough discretion to recommend or not re-recommend just on the philosophical side?
I believe so. I think that the ultimate decision, of course, is the Board of Selectmen.
Right, but you know, the recommendation comes in without micromanaging. Yeah, the, the decision basically comes from the Greens Committee. I mean, that's why it was established, so that these kinds of issues can be sorted out for a final decision. Uh, and you feel that this document gives you enough discretionary room for that?
I think so. I think, you know, I.
Basically, you address any of the issues of numbers of, of monuments and that type of thing, but maybe by not having it in there gives you the discretion to use it.
So, I, I, in, in following this line, I would ask Jerry, is there, you know, I don't have the, uh, document, the, uh, the use document, the green policy, green, uh, policy statement in front of me. I could probably pull it up, but, um, is there a, an application or is there a requirement that there's a summary of the nature of the, uh, the, the monument as opposed to what Charlie just said, the physical characteristics, et cetera? It's basically the justification for, uh, the, the placement of that monument. Is that covered in a separate document or a separate requirement? Because if it is not, should it be part of this?
Well, in part D of that, of the application, it says, "A description of the process and machinery and vehicle used to place the donation on the green" is one of the things, but also a detailed explanation about how the proposed donation meets the criteria of this policy.
Okay.
My, my inclination would be to put that, to split up D and put X, the explanation of how the proposal meets the policy, have that be the very first, the very first requirement. How, how is this proposal worthy, so to speak, of being on our green? You know, does it have the, I can't remember the exact criteria, but does it commemorate an event of national or historic significance and all those things? I would, I, to me, that's, that's, um, I mean, everything else here has to, has to be done correctly, but you can't even go into the details until that hurdle has been met.
Right, I have no objection to that. I think we could add a, the, uh, letter there says E and talk about the detailed explanation of how this proposed donation meets the criteria of this policy.
I, I, I think, I think Sue was looking for that to become A and move everything down.
Okay, no problem.
So, so we take that, yeah, I've just, I've just marked it up on a paper here. Uh, A, uh, A now becomes, uh, a detailed explanation of how the proposed donation meets the criteria of this policy. Um, the, the old A becomes B, uh, the old B becomes C, the old C becomes D, and the old D becomes E. So we've added a section. Does that, does that work for you folks?
Yeah, I like that.
It works. Yes.
Good.
Jerry, are you, are you okay with that, Jerry?
Well, sure, yeah. Uh, I think, uh, of course, it, it's your call on this, but I mean, I'm going to have a, another meeting of the Guilford Green Committee about it if, if you want feedback from us, but I don't think there's, will be any objection to, to that.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm moving with the condition that the, the rest of the committee reviews it, but that could all be done, email or, or whatever, so.
Right.
Cause I think that, that second sentence in the current D and way Sue pointed it out, also fulfills what I'm trying to say. That's almost the meat of this whole thing. And, you know, yeah, then we go, you know, but that has to be decided first before anything else is.
Well, the rest of it is just the mechanical stuff.
Right.
Okay.
And, 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 all right, I think. I'm sort of curious, Jerry, do you know, like, how many applications do you get that just don't get off the ground? In other words, what's the, what's the input and what's the final success rate?
Right. Most, because, because we made this policy, because we were getting quite a few applications, not so much for, for monuments, but for plaques, uh, on benches and things like that, memorial plaques and so forth. And we wanted to limit this to, uh, things of really historical importance.
Right.
And all of those. So this type of monument, I think, I think a proposal for this monument fits that, possibly fits that criteria of something of historical importance. And but we don't get very many of them. You know, a monument, so to speak, is a bigger deal than having a plaque on a bench, so. And there are lots of criteria that they have to fulfill with respect to the monument and what it looks like and so forth, what it's made on, so. I don't, I, I, I don't anticipate we're gonna get a lot of monument requests, you know, of that nature.
Okay, but, but, but your point is a good one, that this includes monuments, markers, plaques, benches and memorials, all, all of which are interesting, but all of which can reach a tipping point of overwhelming, depending on how rigid the criteria are, so we appreciate the hard work here.
Right. Great. All right, I think Charlie moved it. Was there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments?
Yes, I have one, I have one comment. Changing the application form as suggested makes it different from the application form that's stated on the policy itself. So I think we probably should change the application form on the policy to match the application form that you suggested.
That's a good, good point, Jerry. I, I was just pulling up the, uh, the policy itself, uh, having the luxury of my computer in front of me. Um, so I, 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 I see, uh, it's four dot one, um, where the, uh, policy details the, um, the requirements of information for information, so, um, so do you want, is there, can we, uh, is there a motion to amend Charlie's? Charlie, would you accept a friendly amendment, uh, to also include the changing of the policy to represent the same order, uh, of, of requirements?
Yep, yep.
Uh, so Sue with a second on that?
Yes.
Uh, let me try your minds on the, uh, friendly amendment, uh, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Now to the primary motion, um, are there any further comments or questions?
No.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. That motion carries. Jerry, thank you very much for your willingness to work through this with us and all the work you do on behalf of the community.
Well, thank you very much, and I will send the revised versions to Tracy, uh, as soon as I pick to my computer.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we're on to, uh, item nine, uh, and that is, uh, appointments and resignations. Uh, nine dot one is "Act on a Recommendation to Move Dave Vegan from alternate to regular member on the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire November 30th, 2024." Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, uh, let's try your minds, uh, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Motion carries. Nine dot, nine dot two, "Act on a Recommendation to Move Michael Bowden from alternate to regular member of the Shellfish Commission for a term to expire February 28th, 2025." I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Nine dot three. "Act on an Appointment of Terma Feinberg to the Safe Streets Mobility Task Force." Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Request for use of town property on ten dot one. Act on a Request from Parks and Recreation Department to use the green September 5th, 12th, and 26th for rain dates if necessary for its summer concerts. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Uh, call, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. Ten dot two. Remove from the table and take possible action or request for a spot to hold the dance recital on the green June 4th, 2021. Is there a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds on the removal. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectman Haberda?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Danielle Scarpolino is in the, in this meeting. But we've been provided with some additional information, and I think Jerry Silbert is here. And the correspondence received from Danielle indicated her disappointment in the Green Committee's motion to not recommend the use of the green for the for-profit business. Jerry, you just want to give us a little, a little summary from, from your board's perspective?
Sure. When the Green Committee discussed this, we recognized that the very first paragraph of the policy with respect to use of the green has it for specifically nonprofit corporations and, or nonprofit use. And we were unanimously concerned with creating a precedent with respect to having for-profit organizations use the green. Among other considerations, that was a major one, but other considerations, there was the issue of placing basically a tent which would have also a large platform over the grass of the green. And we felt that given the problems with COVID and the uncertainties with respect to that, there was going to be quite a large number of people. So we also felt that that was a factor that we were concerned about. And though there was a suggestion made by Rick Maynard from the Park and Recreation Department that they might consider asking St. George's Church if they could use their parking lot, which is rather large for the venue of this dance concert. So we thought that was a good idea, you know, and I don't know how Danielle feels about it or whether, whether she was able to see whether that would work out. But that certainly was another possibility to hold this dance concert. So basically, the, the board, the Guilford Green Committee unanimously recommended to the Board of Selectmen that this type of use of the green not take place.
All right, Jerry, I think perhaps the more important rationale was the your, your, your talk about the first, the opening paragraph about the regulations, and that is for-profit businesses, and that was a concern of this board when it recommended it to you, to the Green Committee. Is it safe to say that that is the overriding concern from your committee?
Yes, among others, but that was a major concern.
Okay. Any questions or comments for, comments or questions for Jerry from board members?
Helpful summary. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. One, one of the considerations that, and certainly Danielle is listening, she certainly might want to take this into consideration. We are working with the Economic Development Coordinator to put together either an event or a series of events to drive business to, back into Guilford merchants related to COVID recovery. And it may be, it may create an opportunity for Danielle to partner with an agency or a nonprofit as we go through this process. So I'm going to, I, I'll leave it up to you if we want to just table this without the, without rendering an opinion or deny the application with the suggestion that Danielle and the spot continue to look for opportunities with other nonprofits to, to incorporate another nonprofits and potentially the Economic Development Commission and the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce to, 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 to highlight her business as part of some potential events that may be taking place on a green this summer. Try, is there, is there any consensus to return this to the table or is there, on the main motion on the use, are you prepared to vote, up or down?
Oh, my, you know, my, my feelings are, you know, I, I can't support this because of, you know, while I, I thought it was a good idea in some respects because of COVID to get, you know, the community out. You know, I, I you know, the biggest reasons are, you know, the Green Committee made a very clear decision. I'm very concerned, like I was originally about commercializing the green or even opening a door to that. And, and the fact that there are alternatives available. I, 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 I wouldn't support this at this point. You know, what's the point that you made today? There, there are other options, as simple as that, and the risk of opening up to the, the green for this, just, I, I, I struggle with that frankly.
Does Matt, may I add something that, another, another possible venue would be the fairgrounds.
Right.
There are a lot of options. I mean, even in her letter, she said she had other options and that type of thing, you know, so.
We, we spent, we spent a fair amount of time with Danielle when, when she approached us about this, and I think we listed or suggested at least 10 possible options. Some may be better than others, but honestly, the out of all the options that came up, I think there'd be something where this event could happen, but I don't support it being on the green.
And I, I agree with that. I think when we discussed it at length last time, we all pretty much felt that it violated the existing policy, which is that only nonprofits can use the green. And unless the Green Committee felt that, you know, there were some extenuating circumstances here relating to COVID and encouraging business and so on, which turned out not to be the case, that it still goes back to the original question that they're not a nonprofit. My feeling is that we need to vote on, there's an application, we need to vote on it unless, unless the applicant chooses to withdraw it based on the fact that we clearly don't support it.
Right. Well, I, I, I would agree, Sue, we should be, we should vote on it as opposed to, you know, tabling it, once again. And there are always other, there is always the opportunity that Danielle and the spot could come back and reapply in a different fashion or under a different form. So that being said, any more comments or?
I just want to make sure the applicant doesn't have any other comments, but I'm prepared to vote on it. If not.
Okay, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
The motion that's on the table?
Motion that's on the table for the use, that's right.
The use is denied, so I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no on that, that application.
Selectman Haberda? No. So, Selectwoman Renner?
No.
Selectwoman Ruoff?
No.
Selectman Hoy is also a no. That motion carries. All right, committee reports. I'm not sure we have anything at this point. Sandy, anything from?
Well, you, I saw that you actually had mentioned it last meeting, had to leave early, but we do, I hope to have the application for the subdivision go forward to inland wetlands and the Planning and Zoning Commission in May, and I I will, I can announce those dates officially at our next meeting, because I think they're still tentative at this time, but in Karen's, Patrick's first, when she was alerting George and I to this, she also said in her memo that the date for the competitive grant process is, is in November of this year, so to bring up our favorite word, glacial, that doesn't seem so glacial to me since we've been discussing this since 2015, and hopefully we will have some kind of good news. Well, the submission is November. I'm not exactly sure when the decision is made, but we are getting there, and it was important to subdivide the property because neighborworks is going to be responsible for the section that the affordable workforce housing is going to be constructed on, but not, not the whole town property, which we know consists of various entities, the park, the food bank, and the Guilford Center for Children. So that's all I have to say.
Excellent. Thank you. Lou, anything on?
Nothing, sorry, Matt.
All right. Anybody have any correspondence? Hearing none. Old business, I just had one item, and that was the elderly tax relief program, as you recall. There was, I had received correspondence, and we brought it up at the last meeting. Charlie, you had asked, and the reference was in terms of expanding beyond the current top-tier threshold, financial threshold, which is 95,000 after living in town for 25 years. And while there wasn't a, a lot of sentiment or positive sentiment for doing that at this point, Charlie did ask for some data. So the packet we, I put together with the basic information from our assessor's office. There are currently 753 participants in the elderly tax relief program. The average income for those participants is 51,100. The median income is 50,899. And then you can see the number of participants in terms of the, the income range as it, as it goes from the 95,000 down to less than 10,000. And, you know, I, I think it's, it's important to note that we're really hitting that, you know, the, the, the 20,000 to, to, to 79,000 is really where the bulk of those, of those beneficiaries are. So I think the program is hitting the, hitting the target market. And then down below, what I wanted to try to do, which it may or may not have come out the way I wanted it to, but what the estimated number of folks 65 and over, there are two sets of numbers there. One is the DPH number, and one is the CIRC number, 4,823 potential 65-plus-year-old residents versus 5,023 with the, with the state's CIRC database. But what I tried to do is figure out, you know, how, how many potential households are there that could, could take advantage of this program based on their age and, and, and age alone, because I couldn't do longevity. So if you assume that one, there was 1.75 residents per, per household that qualified, the, a number of participants is currently 27% of that potential population. And that's what the, the lower part is designed to do, is just to show at, at, at what levels of inhabitants in those households are, are we serving the population? And clearly, it's between, you know, 20 and, you know, 27% between, or 19 and 27% with those two sets of numbers. So I don't know if that, that, that was helpful. Is that what you were looking for, Charlie, that kind of breakout?
No, I, I think that's very informative, but, you know, I, I think you hit it on the, you know, exactly what I was looking for. It'd be interesting as far as the percentage would, when you, if we looked at the median or or average income level, I bet you that percentage would be substantially higher, but I think this information is very informative, and frankly, it, it doesn't change my, my perspective of what we talked about as far as changing the limits or anything, so. I think it's working.
Yeah, any other comments or concerns or questions or further digging that we need to do on this one? No. Before we move off of it, last week I participated in the annual United Way meeting that they host for folks, and I think, as you may recall, we have partnered with the United Way on that Small Cities Community Development Block Grant for Housing Diversion. So one of the things that they shared was some of the data that they have. And there is an acronym in the, in, in the social services world called ALICE, A-L-I-C-E. And it stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained But Employed. And they have, the 2020 report is out, which is done by United Way. And Guilford with 8,314 households. This report suggests that 23% of those households are ALICE or poverty-level households. So poverty level is one thing, that's a federal number. ALICE is another, which is basically, you know, you, you, you are employed, you have, and you've got, you've got, in most cases, two, two, two family workers, children, et cetera, but you don't have, you don't have an awful lot of money to do things like your refrigerator dies, or you, your car, your, 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 your car dies, or something along those lines. So that's what the ALICE number is. But what I've asked for is to see if they could parse that information by, first off, splitting out the two different levels. Those that are strict, who meet the poverty criteria, and then those who are above the poverty criteria, which is what ALICE is designed for. But, and, and fall into that, into that category. And I don't know if there, I've also asked if there are any other details around the, the information that they have relative to the age, age of the folks in those households, so. It, hopefully, United will be able to provide an additional set of numbers to support this, so. Probably more information than you wanted or bargained for this morning, but you got it anyway.
Well, just, just on that ALICE thing, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, Matt, because it, the people that fall into that category sometimes are just missing some possible benefits by like $1,000 of, you know, between poverty quote, ALICE, so they're struggling, and, and then they can't take advantage is the wrong word, but I mean, you know, if they made $1,000 less, they'd be able to be, be eligible for some benefits that they can't be, but they're still struggling. You know, you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's interesting to, to look at.
Anything further? Any other old business? Any new business? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, which is a non-debatable motion, so we'll do it with a voice vote.
Oh, motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done.
Have a great day. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. See you next time.
Take care.